Up there because that land was given to the city because the developer could then plan and build more density up on Crestview. And that was a trade-off, like a mitigation. And it would not be fair for that land to be abandoned as park, open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Anybody here, anybody else here for public comment for items not on the listed agenda? Okay. Thank you, moving on. We're going to go ahead and do the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any changes or additions to the minutes from May 19?
I didn't have a set of minutes.
I didn't either.
I also didn't get them.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. Through the chair and as noted on the agenda, the May 19 minutes will be presented before the Planning Commission at your next hearing on July 7.
I don't know why I didn't read that whole sentence.
We apologize that we didn't have those ready for you, but we will be bringing them back to the, or forward to the Commission on July 7.
Great, thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, so we'll go ahead and postpone that and move on to our next item, which is public hearing. Our first public hearing and our only public hearing tonight is for 260 Shelford Avenue, but because I do see a couple of new faces, I am going to go over the procedure for a public hearing quickly. The staff will present a report on the history and physical features of the application, followed by staff's recommendations. Then the applicant may make a presentation. Thereafter, all interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else has raised during public hearing described in this notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speakers form, which is found by the door, and hand it over to staff. Staff will then bring it up to me and this will help staff prepare the minutes. First item, item A, is 260 Shelford Avenue, consideration of a conditional use permit for the proposed modification of an existing wireless telecommunications facility. Hi, Lisa.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Lisa Porras, Principal Planner with the City of San Carlos, and I will be presenting this item before you tonight. Again, this is a request for a conditional use permit to modify an existing Sprint wireless telecommunications facility at 260 Shelford Avenue. And the Commission may recall that this is an item that was previously presented to them on October 21 last year, and it was continued, continued with the following direction given by the Planning Commission to the applicant. There were several concerns noted at the last hearing with respect to the noise study and concerns about exist, the other existing wireless facilities on the property and the request to do a comprehensive noise study based upon those concerns. So from the October 21 meeting, the Commission directed the applicant to prepare a comprehensive noise study that would include at least the most recent modifications that were made to an adjacent AT&amp;T wireless facility. There was also a direction to assess the existing site maintenance issues on the Cal Water property, to clarify the overall height of the existing structural equipment where the antennas are proposed to be attached, with the direction that any modification should maintain the existing height of the overall structure. And then finally, that Sprint work with the neighborhoods, the neighborhood, the neighbors in the surrounding neighborhood to address, to look at these additional items more closely and dress, and address some of their concerns. So to refresh our memory, the request by Sprint is to remove existing antennas on the property and replace with new. So overall, right now, there's six antennas for the Sprint wireless facility. The requested modification would involve removing two existing antennas and replacing with two new antennas, which would be of a larger size. The request to install one new additional antenna, which would change the total antennas from six to seven. To install six new radio remote units. To remove two existing cabinets, equipment cabinets inside the existing shelter and replace with two new cabinets. To remove one existing rack inside the cabinet shelter. And also to remove an existing GPS antenna and replacing it with a new GPS antenna to be located in its current location on the shelter itself. And then the seventh new request is to remove an existing chain link fence on the southern side of the property and install it with a new chain link fence to be coated with vinyl and have attached lattice. And this additional modification, modification number seven, is a result of working with the neighbors to improve the overall look and condition of the site, as well as screen the equipment from the neighbors to the south. So refreshing ourselves again about the site and its general location of the Sprint facility, it's a little bit light to see right here, but this is the Cal Water site outlined in red. The existing Sprint structures, there's two of them, one kind of located immediately to the south of the tank and another one in a more of a perpendicular configuration. There's an existing AT&amp;T monopine located over here on the same site. Located just to the north on the mid peninsula, public water storage tanks is a Verizon facility and the located over here is a T-Mobile facility. So again, the site is owned by Cal Water, which is leasing out, has a lease, an existing lease with Sprint. The zoning district is RS6, so a conditional use permit is required in residential zoning districts for new facilities or when you're proposing alterations to an existing facility. The existing facility, again, consists of two pole support structures, as you can see in this photograph here. Each of those has an existing H-frame, which then supports three antennas that are located on each of these structures. Again, there are six antennas in total. The equipment shelter is located here and there is a GPS antenna located right on the equipment shelter itself. So some of the details that the Commission had requested clarification on had to do with the overall height of the existing structures located on the property. So the structures consist of a pole, as you can see here, there are the poles, and those reach up to 24 feet, at least from this elevation here. As you can see, the grade kind of drops down a little bit over here. So if we were to measure from here to here, that would be more than 24 feet. But in measuring, looking at these structures as a whole, they all line up to be, to be in line with this point here, which is to the, which is 24 feet to the top of the pole. Now to the top of the H-frame, it reaches a little bit higher at 25 feet. So the overall existing height of the structure is actually 25 feet. And currently, the antennas are in line with the poles, as you can see right here, at 24 feet. So the proposed modifications would place the new antennas, again, there would be three new antennas on these support structures, and those three would align with the topmost portion of the H-frame right here. The remaining four antennas would maintain their current position at 24 feet. So looking at the proposed modifications in a little bit more detail, the eastern H-frame, which is noted as the northern elevation in your plan set, contains three existing antennas. One of these would be replaced with a new antenna, and then one additional antenna would be introduced to the site with four antennas total. The new antennas would be 72 by 12 by 6 inches in diameter, plus this structure, the eastern H-frame structure would have four new radio remote units attached to them as well, with the dimensions noted in the plans. So this particular structure would go from a total of three antennas to four antennas plus the new radio remote units. The next structure would have the same amount of antennas, however, one of the new antennas would be replaced with a new one, which would be of the same size, plus two new radio remote units attached to the site. These were simulations provided in your packet in October, and those remain the same. As you can see here on this structure, there is the new larger antenna. It kind of stands out a little bit more compared to the existing smaller antennas, it's just longer. And then the new antenna, there would be one over here and then another one over here that's a little bit harder to see, but these might have printed out a little bit better in your packet. So the photo on the north shows the existing and this proposed simulation shows the proposed modifications. With respect to the equipment cabinet, I noted that the existing GPS antenna would be replaced with a new one, which would be exactly of the same size and in the same location. And then inside this equipment shelter, two existing cabinets would be replaced with new equipment, and there's actually one rack inside the equipment shelter that would be removed. And that's the conclusion of the proposed modifications to the wireless facility itself. A new modification to the actual site would, would replace an existing six-foot-tall chain link fence with a new fence. Our code does require that any chain link fence in the residential district be vinyl coated, so we have a condition in place to address that. So the new chain link fence would include vinyl coating and have an attached six-foot-tall lattice attached to the exterior of the fence. There are some photographs in your packet that depict the images of the existing chain link fence and a little bit of the intermittent lattice that is currently located on it. In this picture here, you might be able to see a portion of the lattice here, and it stops. And I'm told by the applicant that one of the residents actually placed the lattice there as an effort to try and screen the equipment from their view. And what Sprint is proposing to do is to replace the entire chain link fence along the entire length of the southern property line and add in lattice along that tire length of the chain link fence. So there would not be any intermittent appearance of the, of the lattice, as is presently on the site. And this would be painted in a dark green, dark green color to try and blend into the natural environs. So looking at the Sprint's responses to the Planning Commission's request for additional information, we'll begin with the comprehensive noise study that was requested to be completed to include the more recent modifications that were made to the AT&amp;T site. I mean, in your packet, there is a noise study, and in that noise study, it indicates that on February 5 this year, all four wireless carriers had their representatives on-site to turn all, on all of their equipment. So again, that would include AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Verizon and Sprint, as well as representatives from Cal Water to turn on their equipment at the site. And the outcome of that noise study resulted in a 43.3 dBA and compared to San Carlos' most restrictive noise measurement at 45 dBA per the nighttime hour. So that noise study came in with a, with a measurement that was below San Carlos' most restrictive noise measurement for the R, for the residential district. And I believe that Sprint has their representative here tonight to answer any technical questions on the noise study that was performed. With respect to overall site maintenance and appearance issues, Sprint's response was to kind of clean up the appearance of that fence by replacing it with a new fence and to really put in new and improved lattice along the exterior side of the fence. And staff would also like to note that in our code, we do have a maintenance, a property maintenance ordinance, which requires property owners to maintain their sites in a, in a, in a condition that does not include any unlawful or harmful hazards on the site. And based upon a site visit that staff went to on the property last week, there wasn't any notable issues with the site. Some of the materials may look a little bit dated, they're not brand-new, the tanks are rather old, but overall, the property appeared to be in a, in a satisfactory state. And certainly, certainly if there's any future concerns about the overall site maintenance of the property, we're welcome to receiving those concerns from the community and our Building Division through its Code Enforcement section would go to the site and do an investigation. With respect to maintaining the overall height, this was a general statement made by the Planning Commission during its last hearing. And as staff explained in a previous slide before, the topmost portion of the existing structures reaches 25 feet. And the facility, the proposed antennas would be positioned in line with the topmost portion of the existing facility, which would essentially amount to a one-foot increase of the existing antenna position, which is currently at 24 feet. So because the new antennas are larger and longer, they would need to be positioned just one foot taller than the existing ones. But again, this would be just for the three new antennas proposed, the remaining four existing antennas would be located in their existing configuration. So there was a little bit of clarity in terms of was the Commission's direction to maintain the antenna height, the new antenna height with the existing antenna height, or was it that it should be no taller than the existing structure? So we're happy to have that conversation if we need to revisit that portion of the project. Sprint did do additional neighborhood outreach. They had a meeting held on April 8 earlier this year. They sent out notices on March 24 to all residences within 300 feet of the project site. They had a representative that did their noise study available at the meeting to answer any questions, and it's my understanding that there was one neighbor that did attend that meeting. And then since that meeting, and I think up until today, there's been email correspondence back and forth between the applicant and the neighbors, sharing information in terms of the new fencing details, where that fence would be located, as well as Sprint's, you know, their agreement to do a post RF and a post noise study post installation, which is a condition of approval that staff had added in to the draft code compliance certificate. So as before, the proposed modification is consistent with the general plan to require telecommunications and utility facilities to be sensitively placed and screened to the greatest extent possible. The project does comply with the Federal Communications FCC regulations regarding radio frequency emissions, as noted in the RF study. And the project meets the required findings in the City of San Carlos' wireless ordinance, as well as the findings for the use permit. As I mentioned, we included several recommended conditions of approval related to the issues that were presented in the past with, with respect to aesthetics and screening and concerns about radio frequency and noise. Condition number three requires that all the antennas and support structures are painted a matte green to match the existing subdued color that's presently on the facility currently. Condition number four would require that new chain link fence and add specificity that it needs to be vinyl coated, what color, as well as with the attached lattice. And condition number 11 addresses a post-installation RF and noise studies to be prepared to ensure that the operation of the wireless facility after the modifications maintains its current standards with the FCC and the city's noise regulations. So this concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. I believe the Sprint representative is here, along with the representative that prepared the noise study to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Lisa at this point?
So Lisa, what happens when a resident complains about either the noise or the condition of the facility?
With respect to the noise and how we've addressed noise complaints in the past, is that we recommend, we strongly recommend, because it's a matter of practicality, in order to address whether or not a specific use or activity is operating in a manner that would exceed our noise thresholds, we need to know about it when it's happening. So the idea is that you would contact the city's Building Division, and we would, you know, coordinate someone to go out to the site and do a noise measurement reading. If at any time, the, you know, operation is surpassing our noise ordinance threshold, then they need to, they would need to address the situation. There is a provision in the, in the draft conditional use permit that requires the applicant or operator to modify their operations if they're ever found to be inconsistent with the city's noise standards. So that's how we address noise. It's a little bit hard because if it's after the fact, we can't prove it. So we really rely on the neighbors to let us know when it's happening and we can address it at that time. With respect to site maintenance, again, if there's any concern, and this has happened before, that, you know, neighbors have contacted the city to say that a certain neighbor, you know, might have some, you know, hazardous-looking materials, or the site is overgrown in such a way that it really presents some sort of hazard or nuisance. And there's a whole list of things that constitute what is considered, you know, a property maintenance issue. So we would need to know about it, and then we can conduct an investigation. And we would require that the property owner remediate the situation to comply with our property maintenance ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Would the applicant like to come forward at this point?
My name is Sarah Hu. I think we met back in October. Thank you, Lisa, for that presentation. I think it sums up some of our measures that we've taken since our last meeting and some items that I just want to add. Prior to the noise assessment that we did, there were some complaints about the humming noise or, and so we actually had our maintenance go out there to repair the humming before we took our assessments. And once that was complete, we contacted all the carriers to come out and activate their site as if it were, I guess, everything was on. So that was successful. And we were able to take the measurements, which you have seen the results of. And a couple of things that I also want to add is that I've had contact with the residents and up to today. We're actually going to extend the fence. We have it on the southern property line right now, but we're going to extend it northeast, just to accommodate them further. And then the other item that they were concerned about is post-installation RF studies. That's something that we are going to accommodate and have it, have it include the surrounding properties, so up to 120 feet.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this point?
So those were pretty much the concerns that the neighbors have addressed with you, have, have talked to you about, and it sounds like most of them, if not all of them, have been addressed?
Yes, and we had our community hearing, and I've been available to them via email and phone, so.
Okay, and I just had one question. The humming noise, was that in the air conditioning unit? So did your, your?
It was.
Okay, great. So then that's repaired?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
I have one, although maybe for the noise engineer. One of the criticisms that the, the neighbors made in the correspondence that was provided to us was that when the noise study was done, it was cold outside and the fans only kick in at higher temperatures. Did you do something to trigger those fans despite the lower temperatures?
Yeah, we have Bill Hammett here who did the noise setting. He could probably delve into it a little bit more about some of the tactics they used to mitigate that.
Great, thank you. Bill, can you come on up and introduce yourself?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bill Hammett. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California. I manage a firm of 20. We're located up in Sonoma, and a regular part of our professional practice includes the calculation or the measurement or the mitigation of RF exposure conditions, as well as acoustic noise emissions. We do this work for cities, for carriers. As engineers, our job is really easy. What are the numbers and how do they compare? So who asked the question about the?
Commissioner.
It was tough when we got there because we couldn't, the Sprint tech couldn't get their air conditioner to stay on all the time, which was the worst case because it was cool. There wasn't a lot of heat load. So we actually ran down and got a hair, a hairdryer. And this is normally, we carry one with us, but we didn't have one, so we went to buy a new one. And the poor Sprint technician was sitting there holding it against the thermal contacts in the controller in order to make it run the whole time. And so that's how, how we did that. We've been at the site a number of times over the years and have done a lot of baseline work as, as well as mitigation in a couple of places, particularly with the AT&amp;T shelter. We designed that shelter.
Right.
So that, to answer your question.
I don't, I don't want to belabor this too, too long. I guess there are four cellular services up there. Each of them have their own sites with their own fans presumably. Did you have access to the other carriers that you could activate their fans at the same time?
We did. The T-Mobile, for instance, has one, they actually have two of the 2106 units. Those fans run all the time. We have worked in the past to try and open it up and turn it, to make it go faster, and we couldn't do it. This was several years ago. And they're a very common unit, very quiet. So by the time you get 10 feet away, you can't, you can't tell that they're on. Verizon, the same way. We went around to the Buckland side in order to get down to, to the Verizon situation. We've done that a number of times as well. AT&amp;T, the shelter we designed is a passive shelter with a natural airflow through it. It's a concrete block enclosure, so there's no sound coming out from that. And who else is the other one?
I think that, I think you got to four of your Sprint's.
Yeah, Sprint was the other one.
Although now, and I won't blame you for it, but you've triggered another. So are you suggesting that the other carriers have quieter fans than Sprint?
Have quieter fans than Sprint?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that?
Well, if you go back, can you go back to the, the photo of the shelter? Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Maybe the very first one. It's interesting because it's been built up over time, and so they're all a little The very front one, your centerpiece? There it was. So, yeah, this one is fine.
This is good?
Yeah, can I go to the there and speak?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Take the microphone with me.
This is their shelter.
You say they, do you mean Sprint?
This is the Sprint shelter. This is one of the earliest ones up there. So it's a fully enclosed shelter with cabinets inside. And in those days, these vents were actively used. There's one on the backside as well, and it pulled air through the shelter and cooled the equipment. And these were noise sources because equipment inside would generate noise and we'd get it outside. Long ago, they changed that design. They covered these vents, sort of no longer vents, it's a solid wall. And they put two air conditioners. It's a split system where inside, it's a, it's a fully enclosed, sealed inside, and the air runs over some coils and cools itself inside. And then the cables come out. Here is one air conditioner here, the other one's on the other side. This one's been disconnected for years. So the only one that, that runs is on the outside. And normally, it's very quiet because there's not a whole lot of heat load in, in this facility. And it kicks on and runs for a few minutes and shuts off. This is what we forced on all the time, and that was the predominant source. But it's not a normal condition, that it would run continuously because it's effective. When it turns on, it cools the air inside and shuts off. It comes back on again a little bit later when the, you know, circle five, 10, 15 minutes later, when the, the temperature rises inside.
You might have to grab the microphone. I think, I don't think they can pick you up right now.
Oh, I was going to say, I think, I think we're going to want you to get over in the mic. Sorry about that.
It's not your fault.
Nope.
It's ours.
That made sense to me, though. Thanks.
So it's, it's an interesting one, and it's a very quiet installation under normal operating conditions, but we forced it to be as loud as it possibly could be, to make a worst case, and measured all the way around, all the fence, all the way. And the highest we got was 43.3, and, you know, so that's less than even the nighttime.
Can you give me a sense, just so I understand, like, the loudness of that versus just a classic residential air conditioner that you might have in your home?
This is a more efficient installation because it isn't the air conditioner, it's an outside condensing unit. Maybe that's what you're referring to. Typically, you find those in commercial installations where you have the inside piece that exchanges air past some coils to cool it off, but then the actual unit is outside that's, that's cooling off that coolant. As opposed to, it's called a split system, as opposed to a single system, which you might put in a window where it's, you know, doing everything right there. So this is quieter than a window type. It's typical to what you would find at a, this size, it's a small one, so a small office might have something like this.
I'm done.
Great. Does anyone have any questions for Lisa at this point? Great. Does anybody else have any questions for the sound engineer? Thank you very much.
Uh huh.
Okay. Great, well, thank you very much. And seeing nobody else from the public who's here for public comment, I can go ahead and close public comment and move on to commissioner deliberation if you guys are okay with that. Okay, can I get a motion?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Commissioner, comments or deliberation?
The only comment I have is sort of around the repair of these units. For example, the humming noise. And are we dependent on either a three-year yearly review, a three-year review, not a yearly review, or complaints from the residents in order to address these types of issues?
The City of San Carlos's wireless ordinance requires, so it's required for all wireless facilities, that within 45 days of the modification or installation, that a, an RF study be done as well as a noise study to confirm, you know, the previous studies. And in addition to that, the city's ordinance requires that every three years that they comply or show to the city that they comply with the FCC standards as well as the noise ordinance. So they would need to do that every three years. It's built into our ordinance. So not only is the requirement of our ordinance is built, placed in the conditions of approval as well for the project.
How was the complaint handled, I think? Was that your question?
And certainly to follow up on the complaint portion, if there's, within that three-year period, certainly if there's any concern from a neighbor that there's, you know, potential that there's, you know, there's, you don't want to wait three years for the study to be done. We can certainly require it be done within that time period, within that intermittent period if there's a complaint based, neighborhoods, you know, state their complaints to the city.
Okay. So it's really up to the residents to sort of complain if they think, you know, one of the air conditioning units has gone out or is, you know, a belt is squeaking or something like that that's sort of a repetitive noise?
Correct.
Okay.
If someone should hear anything unusual on the site, they need to let us know.
Okay. That's important for people to know. And I wonder if maybe at some point down the road, we might want to let the residents that are located nearby these facilities know that somehow, whether it be through an email communication or a letter or something to just let them know that the appropriate way to get these things addressed so that it's not a problem for individuals that come here to get new facilities. And then there was one more thing that I was going to ask. Oh, when you say every three years for a facility, because there's four cellular carriers on that site, does that mean that each one does it every three years? Or is there one every three years for all the carriers on one particular site?
Well, the condition is for every wireless facility, so they all need to do it. So with respect to, I guess your question is how they do it. Are they looking at just their facility or do they do a comprehensive analysis? With respect to the Sprint property, because the way our noise ordinance works, it applies to any activity or operation for any given site, for one site. So we have multiple sites here, each with their own carriers. So for this particular site, we have two. So any study would need to look at both AT&amp;T and Sprint for this site. And then, of course, the Verizon facility is on the mid-peninsula site just to the north, and T-Mobile is actually on another site. So one of the things, I'd have to look into the conditions of approval that were adopted for each of those wireless facilities to see if they specified that the noise study be done in a comprehensive manner. But the way that our noise ordinance works, it works for one particular site. So that's what we have to compare the threshold against.
Is that something that down the road, we can sort of change in the conditions of approval for future things where we look at sort of more comprehensive rather than a single site, especially in locations where we have multiple sites so close together?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And maybe Sarah or someone from Sprint can clarify when an RF study is done, do you need to look at wireless facilities within a certain distance of whether they're on the same site or not? That I don't have the answer to. Maybe perhaps the applicant knows or?
The noise expert.
Noise expert, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Bill Hammett again. Happy to answer that question. It's always comprehensive. When we go to a site, we don't distinguish, well, this one has so much energy and ignore the others. It's always a total RF exposure conditions, so we look at the whole site. And similarly, when we do the noise, you can't really isolate them because they're so close together. We look at the total, everything on all three parcels together.
So if this were done in three years, and I assume that the, hopefully the cellular companies work together to have one done every three years rather than each one of them doing it, you know, every nine months or something like that, it does include all the locations?
It would work for everybody.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Does that answer your question? Great. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments at this point?
Brief comment?
Yeah.
Just want to commend Ms. Hu. You know, it's, you folks have priority in getting these through. You've clearly worked with the community by the fact that nobody's here. That says something significant. Thank you. Also, planning staff, obviously, I assume you contributed as well. Nobody likes these things. I mean, nobody does. And the fact that we don't have anyone here, when we had a decent number of people in October, says a significant amount about the work that you did in the front end. And I also want to commend Mr. Hammett as well. We see experts from time to time. You were very responsive in your answers to our questions and seemed very knowledgeable, which is helpful. So, well done, everybody.
Great, thank you. I just have one comment before we move to a motion, just on the draft conditional use permit. I noticed that item four, which talks about the fence, doesn't mention that it's the south side. And I noted that the applicant also said that they will be adding some to the northeast side, so I guess I just want to make sure that's codified in the condition.
Yes, I can certainly qualify that in terms of the location of the fence. And I believe the extension to the northeast would go beyond the Cal-Water property line. Can you clarify that? Maybe I'll bring up an image on the screen.
That would be up to you to do on your own. Let's see. So.
Here's the site, the Cal-Water site here. And you can't see it on this map, but I put this map up purposely so you can see the configuration of the parcel lines. So the property owners concerned with the screening, you know, are located here. These are each of their properties. And there is, so basically, Anchor Lane kind of cuts across. So it's almost working as if it's a private road. So if the fence were to be extended, maybe Sarah, you can explain where you wanted to extend it. If it runs across property lines, you know, staff has no objection to that, but I would want to be mindful about placing a condition that would effectively need to be in place on another property.
Got it.
To resolve the issue.
Thank you.
Okay, actually, I just wanted to clarify. So the extension would actually follow the property line.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay. So we would turn the corner?
Yeah. Turn the corner, which maybe I didn't explain clear enough, but yeah, we would turn the corner. So, and as far as the property line, I think the fence is set with an eight-foot buffer in between, so there should be no issues as far as crossing to other residents.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. And that was my only comment. Okay. Unless anybody else has any other comments, I would love to entertain a motion.
I move that the planning commissioner approve Modus Corporation on behalf of Sprint's request for a conditional use permit, as modified a moment ago by the chair, to allow for modifications to the existing wireless telecommunications facility at 260 Shellford Avenue based on the required findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report.
May I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you. Great. Moving on to our next item on the agenda is reports, correspondence, and general information. A, report on recent city council actions.
I don't have any new information for the commission tonight.
Great, thank you. Item B, planning commission comments or reports. Does anybody have one?
I just have, I just have one. I wanted to congratulate the new officers. That's wonderful. And I also wanted to thank you guys very much for my year serving as chair. It was eventful and fun and I really enjoyed it. And thank you guys for putting your faith in me for this year. And thank you very much to staff, especially Lisa and Al. It was just wonderful working with you behind the scenes and in front of the scenes, and I really appreciate everything you guys did. So thank you.
And you did a great job.
Thank you, Angela. You did a great job.
Thank you.
I just note for staff that I will not be here on July the 21st in the event that there is a meeting. Jesse will be chair for the first time.
Woo-hoo. All right.
Uh oh.
So we start setting up now.
Yes. Great.
I'll start doing push-ups.
Okay. Any correspondence? I didn't see any on the dais.
No, there was none received.
Great, thank you. And then, planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects.
Yes, I have a couple items to share with the commission tonight. The first new information that I would like to share is that we do have a new member for our residential design review committee. Some of you may know that RDRC member Robert Hudson decided to not pursue another term on the RDRC. He had other commitments that he needed to make, so that opened up a vacancy on the RDRC. We received three applications from very, very good candidates, so the vacant position was in the category of a design-related field. The city council conducted interviews and they selected a gentleman by the name of Joaquin Preedin. I think it's P-R-E-D-I-N, or I will stand corrected at the next meeting. Joaquin has a background in landscape architecture. I believe he presently works for Caltrans. He's worked in the state of Hawaii on master plans in the state for landscape architecture. And he will take his seat on July 7th at the next RDRC meeting. So we will have Bonnie McClure still on the RDRC, Joaquin, and then, of course, Shannon serving as the chair. And staff is available. I just wanted to let you know publicly, Shannon, that we are available to meet with you beforehand to go over, you know, any questions you may have about the RDRC and how we run those meetings and the typical format and get you up to speed on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that is great news. With respect to just basic operations here happening at the city, some of you may know that this council chamber will undergo a significant remodel following the last city council hearing on July 14th before they go on a break. So beginning July 15th, there will be construction in this room, and it's estimated to occur for over a couple of months. So basically, that means when council gets back from its break, most likely, they're going to be having their meetings inside the city hall library on the second floor, as they've done in the past, I believe, for their budget meetings. And then likewise, the planning commission will, by necessity, also need to meet in the city hall library. So we will make sure that it's clearly noted on the agenda and probably have some sort of announcement on our website as well to let folks know where the city council and planning commission hearings will be taking place during the period of construction. So that's exciting news to have a new and improved council chamber, meeting room. As far as projects go, I just would like to share a couple of projects that will be coming before the commission without getting into too many details, but the nature of them. One of them is an annexation on 17 Cranfield. This will involve an annexation and the development, I believe, of four new homes off of Cranfield. The project proposed at 77 Walnut Street, it's a 20-unit condominium project, is making its way forward and will soon be coming to the planning commission. There is a mixed-use project located at 436 Laurel Street that is, again, moving forward. This is a smaller mixed-use project that will come before the planning commission. And then also to let the planning commission know, we've had a lot of questions on this in terms of what's going on with the Cherry Chestnut condominium project that was approved several years back. I think this was approved prior to our existing zoning ordinance. There has been a request to extend the life of the tentative map, so that'll be coming forward before the planning commission for your consideration. And then finally, we thought we were done, but we noticed one more item that we'd like to recommend a change on in terms of our zoning ordinance cleanup items. We'd like to bring that back to the commission in July. And this has to do with pursuing some economic development objectives, so we will dive into the details on that for one additional item to present to you for a recommendation before we take everything to the city council. And I guess to close, I would like to thank you, Angela, publicly for your time serving on chair for the commission. You did a great job. We'll be sorry to see you go, but you only get a year, so we'll be working with David next. And also to let you know, we'll be reaching out to you to meet with you prior to your start of serving on the chair and letting you know that Al and I are available for you as well if you have any questions about running these hearings. So with that, I think I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Lisa. Okay, seeing nothing else, I'd like to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:50.